Before we begin our meeting, we will have a prayer from Councilman Schreiber, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Father, we pray that as our Creator, you grant us wisdom, forgiveness, compassion, and strength as we go forth in our daily lives. Father, extend your blessing to those who are present, to their family, friends, and coworkers. Dear Lord, we ask for your forgiveness for what we have done and for what we have failed to do. May each of us place our lives in your trust. Thus we pray, in the name of the Father, of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen.
(Inaudible)
Welcome, everyone. Before we begin our meeting, we will have a prayer from Councilman Schreiber, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Father, we pray that as our Creator, you grant us wisdom, forgiveness, compassion, and strength as we go forth in our daily lives. Father, extend your blessing to those who are present, to their family, friends, and coworkers. Dear Lord, we ask for your forgiveness for what we have done and for what we have failed to do. May each of us place our lives in your trust. Thus we pray, in the name of the Father, of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen. (Inaudible) Welcome, everyone, to the Monday, September 20th, or September 16th, 2019 City Council Meeting. Mrs. Donaldson, roll call, please.
Fitzwater.
Present.
Graham.
Here.
Hensley.
Present.
Hussey.
Kimna.
Here.
Mahalovich.
Here.
Praither.
Here.
Schreiber.
Here.
Ward.
Here.
Wiseman.
Present.
Item three, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I'd like to ask if there are any scouts. Did I see there was a Boy Scout here this evening in our audience? Welcome. So if you'd like to come forward, we always like to recognize our scouts, and you can tell us your name and what school you're from, and maybe what badge or project that you're working on. Welcome.
Right now, I'm working on citizenship in the community, and I'm from Blair Oaks, and I'm Isaac.
Welcome. Well, we're glad to have you, and good luck with your badge, and thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, great job. And item four, we have a proclamation and recognition of Bob Watson. And as we know, Bob was very special to us, and he followed the city and the state very well, and he is greatly missed, and we just wanted to take a moment on behalf of the city since he was so very important. It wasn't just a job for Bob, but he took it very seriously, what he did, and he just loved the city, and it was evident that he did. And we appreciate him so much that we wanted to take a moment to recognize his family, his friends, and his News Tribune family. So I have a proclamation I'd like to read and present, but I'd like to ask if everybody who's here tonight, from the News Tribune or his family, if you would all come forward to the podium, we would like to take a moment to recognize Bob. So I know we're thankful, we have a good group with us, a large group here tonight, so we appreciate everybody coming here, and welcome, everyone. And I have a special proclamation that I would like to read and share with everyone. And it says, "Whereas, Robert W. Bob Watson covered news in the Jefferson City area for 45 years as a radio, television, and newspaper reporter, serving as a senior member of the Capitol Press Corps and the media liaison for the 19th Circuit Court. And whereas nicknamed Bulldog, Watson informed and educated the community on the issues and challenges it faced, and built a reputation as a journalist who valued fairness, accuracy, and persistence. And whereas, over the span of three decades at the Jefferson City News Tribune, Watson covered community and school news, Lincoln University, the courts, Circuit appellate, and Missouri Supreme Court, as well as high-profile criminal cases. For more than two decades, he focused on coverage of state and federal governments, including the death of a Missouri governor, the resignation of another due to scandal, and numerous presidential visits. And whereas, his work has been celebrated by his peers, earning numerous journalism awards, including the prestigious WE Hussman Employee of the Year for 2018, as well as from the legal community, including winning the Missouri Bar Association's Excellence in Legal Journalism Award three years, as well as the Bar Association's recognition for his career in covering Missouri courts. And whereas, we remember and thank Robert W. Bob Watson for his dedicated service to our country and our community. Therefore, I, Kerry Turgeon, Mayor of the City of Jefferson, do hereby proclaim our sincere appreciation for the many years of service of Robert W. Bob Watson to the City of Jefferson." So it's kind of unusual that we would write something for Bob, because Bob usually writes for us, and so this was really nice that we had an opportunity to share about him, and it doesn't all fit on this paper, but this just gives a summary of our appreciation for Bob, and we feel pretty certain that he is still writing, he's just writing from a different angle now than he was before, and we know that he is shining down, and we appreciate his service. And it really means a lot that you all would come here tonight and allow us to do this recognition, so I know we have family members, and Gary Castor, maybe Gary, I'll turn it over to you to begin, and if you would like to, is there any words you'd like to say, and then maybe if the family would like to say anything? All right, thank you.
So I would say first, most city officials would be really worried that Bob would have a media question for you, so you can be at ease, we don't have a question for you at this time. The thing that always surprised me about Bob, he was quick to point out he was from St. Louis. He had no plans to stay in Jefferson City. His goal was to go back to St. Louis. And what, but he came to find out is what a great community this is. It became his home, and he understood better than many the importance of his role in this city, to ask the questions, to help educate the community so they can make informed decisions. And he did not take that duty lightly, and we just find ourselves feeling blessed that we were opportunity to share this space with him, to work with him daily, and know what a humble, generous man he was, that he gave so freely of his skills and his talent. And thank you for this honor, he would have treasured this immensely.
Thank you, Mr. Castor. We're also really happy to have friends and family, and News Tribune family as well, so if anyone would like to say a few words, we welcome you to say.
My name is Drew, and I'm a son. My dad's the one who spoke a lot and had words, I'm not, so I just want to say thank you for this, I know you'd appreciate it very much.
Thank you for those kind words, that does mean a lot, and I know you have some others. Do you want to do an introduction, or anything?
This is my son, Bob's grandson, Declan, from St. Louis.
Hello.
Hi, hello.
He's usually a lot more talkative, too, so. And this is Dad's longtime friend, Annette, and her daughter, Christina.
Hi.
I can't give an introduction for everybody, so if you need anybody else, go ahead.
Rest of the News Tribune employees.
We recognize a lot of our News Tribune, Bob's News Tribune family here, so we appreciate it. Thank you all for coming, and does Council have anything to add at this time? If not, I'd like to invite all of you forward, I'd like to present the proclamation, oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Fitzwater.
I was just going to make the comment, I've had an opportunity to work with reporters over the years, both here at City Hall, but through my other job, and you work with some that are fair, some that are unfair, some that are tough, some that just kind of do what they're supposed to do, but Bob was tough, but he was fair. And he, I think as you said, he really loved this community, he loved the Capitol, he loved forcing folks to deal with the tough issues, he always give you a fair shake in dealing with the tough issues, and I think from our perspective, that's all we can ask for, is someone that just gives us the ability to get our message out. Whether you agree with it or disagree with it, Bob always gave you the ability to get your message out, so thank you.
He absolutely did, and I think that's something, too, that we're thankful that we do still have his words and his writings that can be remembered and shared as we look at history, that's a part of it. He wrote, you know, a part of that as well, as was evident in this proclamation, and so we will cherish that, and I know that his family and the next generation will as well. I'd like to invite everybody forward for a photo, and Council as well.
Can I have you guys, either everyone shift, or a couple of you maybe come on the side? Yeah, we need it this way. That's too far. Nice drop. I think if you can just go into. One, two, three.
the nation, and this is a very exciting proclamation, so I believe we have Sean Welcome with us this evening. I might. Are they, suddenly the mayor needs reading glasses, but I know I'm too young for that, you're asking, but this is quite a recognition, and we are honored to be able to celebrate that, and it's great when we can celebrate education, because education is important for our workforce, and what you offer is certainly important to our area. And I'd like to start by reading this proclamation. It says, "Whereas, State Technical College of Missouri has been named the best two-year college in the United States, according to Wallet Hub, comparing State Tech to more than 700 other two-year colleges in the country. And whereas, in 2018, State Tech was also ranked the third-best two-year college in the country by Forbes Magazine. And whereas, State Tech has a 99% job placement rate, proving that it prepares students for profitable employment and a life of learning. And whereas, in 2019, State Tech recorded a record-breaking first-year enrollment class for the third year straight. Therefore, I, Kerry Turgeon, Mayor of the City of Jefferson, congratulate State Technical College of Missouri on their achievements, and wish them the best of luck in years to come. Congratulations on that awesome ranking." That is pretty cool. So tell us a little about this, and what's going on at State Tech.
Well, thank you, and first I'd like to say, Bob always made me sound articulate, which I'll be the first to say I'm not, which I think he meant he liked us, and I think he'd be tickled to see this number-one ranking. Last year, we received a number-three ranking by the same organization, and we all thought that'll be hard to pass up, and I'm reminded almost every day that you can only go one direction from here, which is down from number one, but we're pretty tickled to see that. Second, actually, third year of record-breaking first-year enrollment, so second year of overall increase in enrollment, we're up another 15% this fall, we were up 18% last fall, so we're growing very quickly, and struggling to keep up with parking and housing, but Jefferson City has helped us with that, and so many of our students, actually more students come from the Jefferson City area than any other ascending high school in the state, or anywhere for that matter. So we're appreciative of that, and appreciative for the recognition by the Council.
Well, thank you, this is a really big deal for mid-Missouri, and for State Tech to have this recognition, and we know that it is hard to get enrollment like what you've seen, and that's really amazing, and we know that you're creating not just jobs, but really good jobs, and really sought-after jobs for our economy, so we appreciate that and keep up the great work, and I know we have Councilman Mahalovich who might want to say a word or two.
Well, I enjoyed my 26 and a half years, and it took me to retire in January for you to achieve your number-one ranking.
There's probably a correlation there.
So you accomplished that. No, it was a great, it's a great institution, both to work for and to educate young men and women, and to add on to what you say, because I was in institutional research and planning, we did a lot of looking at where we got students from, and Jefferson City, Cole County is a big provider of students, and we employ quite a few people from these, from the county and the City of Jefferson, so even though you're 30 minutes away, I still feel like you're part of the Jefferson City community, so, and I know you're actively involved in the Chamber of Commerce and other things, so appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
Absolutely, well said. And I have, and I'm excited, a State Tech shirt now, so I can't wait to represent State Tech of Missouri right here in Jefferson City, so I will wear this very proudly, very excited to have that. And again, congratulations on this wonderful ranking, and I'd like to present you the proclamation, and maybe Mahalovich and I will come in the front with you, and invite Council, oh, Councilwoman Ward.
I'd also like to congratulate you for this ranking. I have two nephews there that just started there.
Perfect.
Last month, one in your autobody program, and the other one in your lineman program.
Very good.
So this is good news to this ant's ears.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Fitzwater.
I was just going to make a quick comment, we had one of the young folks out of your, I guess turf management, that may not be the accurate, the.
Commercial turf and grounds, yes.
At our Rotary Club several months ago, and he made a presentation, and he went through, and in fact, he got an internship with the Boston Red Sox last year.
Yes.
So we were questioning him after he got done, and he said, he did such a good job, he got an opportunity to get invited back to the playoff, and then all the way through the World Series. So of course, someone asked him if he was going to get a World Series ring, and he said, you know, last time the Red Sox won the World Series, they went all the way down to the grounds crews, so he was anticipating a World Series ring.
I'm pretty sure, I think he actually did get one, yeah, I think he is getting one.
So you've got an amazing program there.
Well, thank you.
That is very cool. Well, thank you, President Strong, for your leadership, too, to make this happen, so we appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, well, we'll get a picture, thank you. All right, and next we have, we're going to present the Walk to End Alzheimer's proclamation. We have a great purple group behind us there, so if you all would come forward, we would love to recognize Alzheimer's awareness, and all of the great events that are coming up during the month of October. So I can't wait to hear about all the Wear Purple Day and everything here, so I will share this special proclamation that says, "With more than 5 million Americans suffering from Alzheimer's, a common form of dementia that affects patients' memory and other intellectual abilities serious enough to interfere with daily life. Alzheimer's disease accounts for 60 to 80% of dementia cases. And whereas, Alzheimer's is not a normal part of aging, while a majority of people affected by Alzheimer's are 65 or older, up to 5% of people diagnosed with Alzheimer's experience symptoms while still in their 40s and 50s. And whereas, the Alzheimer's Association Greater Missouri Chapter will hold their Jefferson City Walk to End Alzheimer's on October 6. They are proud to join the over-half-million participants worldwide who participate annually in the Walk to End Alzheimer's event, in order to raise community awareness and funds to further care and support patients afflicted with Alzheimer's, and to continue the much-needed research to eradicate this dreadful disease. So on behalf of the Jefferson City Council and citizens of Jefferson City, I commend Alzheimer's Association Greater Missouri Chapter for organizing and promoting our local Walk to End Alzheimer's event. So I do proclaim October 1 as Alzheimer's Awareness Day, and encourage everyone to wear purple on that day. So we'd love to hear about what you have going on for Alzheimer's Awareness Day."
Thank you so much for this great opportunity to address your group, and for your support in bringing awareness to this important issue facing so many of your constituents here. If I could, if you would indulge me for just a second, and if I could see a show of hands, how many people in this room know a loved one or a friend who's been impacted by Alzheimer's? Yeah, and I mean, that's really why we want to create this Awareness Day, and why we are all active participants in the Walk to End Alzheimer's, because this disease, it's horrible, it's savage, and it's 100% fatal, and those are sobering facts. But what we hope to do is to create the awareness that helps build better quality of care systems, and the funding that helps accelerate science so that we can have survivors, so that we can end this disease. And I really believe that the people standing behind me are going to be really instrumental in making that happen, so I'm so grateful for the opportunity to talk to you about our Awareness Day. On October 1, as Mayor Turgeon indicated, we encourage employers to encourage their employees to wear purple, if you are self-employed, or if you're not employed, still wear purple. We are going to be doing things downtown, we're going to be creating awareness all across the city, and our goal is to really give an opportunity for people to take a thoughtful moment and recognize something that historically is a disease that nobody talked about, and make sure that people who are marginalized have the ability to really have this disease be visible to everyone, and by being visible, we can move forward and make sure that we can create a world without Alzheimer's soon. And that leads us to the Walk to End Alzheimer's on October 6, that we hope any and all of you attend, it is a completely free event, and will have a lot of fun and engaging opportunities to interact, and an inspiring short program for people to take part of, so thank you.
Well, thank you, we're glad to have you, and I know the day of the walk, Councilman Mahalovich will be there in my place, since I can't be there on that day, but he will be there, and I hope we have other council members there as well. And if people want to sign up or walk, how do they do that?
We have set up a site, it's ALZJC.org, it's pretty easy to remember, and setting up, registering to be a walk participant takes only a few minutes, and we encourage people to sign up, start teams, and bring out as many groups of people as you can to show that we're all unified in finding an end to Alzheimer's.
Well, let's make that happen, and I know I've been fortunate to go to the event every year, and I love seeing everybody wearing purple, and the flowers, I see you have some with you today, which is very cool, if you haven't been, it's a neat feeling to see everybody coming together to support, and would you all like to introduce yourselves into the microphone, and tell us who you are, and welcome all of you here tonight.
I'm Tom Minglosser with Wayley's Pharmacy, I know Ron really well, also Jeff C. Host's Lions Club, knowing you guys really well, so I'm here representing, mon, my other hats, the Alzheimer's Association, so I have a grandmother who died with the disease, it was very unfortunate to see the progression go from a loving grandmother to not knowing me, and screaming at me, and get away from me, kind of stuff, you know, and that's really heartbreaking when you go down those paths, so, and I know other people have experienced that as well. From the pharmacy side of it, I also know there is no treatment for it, you can only slow it down, and that's really depressing, so that's why we're here, is to try to help progress that along, so.
Good evening, thank you again, Krista Rale, I'm actually the event chair, this will be my second year as the chair. I got involved because my mother had Alzheimer's, she passed away last November. I had an uncle who had vascular dementia, he passed away this April, and I also had a grandfather who died in the 80s from Alzheimer's, so I am an advocate for trying to find a cure, so thank you again.
My name.
My name is Sheila Spencer, I've had two grandpas that have died of Alzheimer's. I have an uncle that has Alzheimer's, and I had a mother that had Alzheimer's, but was so scared by it, she had to take care of her dad, and took her own life because of it, because she knew that, but either way, she had Alzheimer's, she had the onset of it, so.
And make sure that people who are marginalized have the ability to really have this disease be visible to everyone. And by being visible, we can move forward and make sure that we can create a world without Alzheimer's soon. And that leads us to the Walk to End Alzheimer's on October 6th, that we hope any and all of you attend. It is a completely free event, and we'll have a lot of fun and engaging opportunities to interact, and an inspiring short program for people to take part of. So, thank you.
Well, thank you, we're glad to have you. And I know the day of the walk, Councilman Mahalovich will be there in my place, since I can't be there on that day, but he will be there. And I hope we have other council members there as well. And if people want to sign up or walk, how do they do that?
We have set up a site, it's ALZJC.org. It's pretty easy to remember, and setting up, registering to be a walk participant takes only a few minutes, and we encourage people to sign up, start teams, and bring out as many groups of people as you can to show that we're all unified in finding an end to Alzheimer's.
Well, let's make that happen. And I know I've been fortunate to go to the event every year, and I love seeing everybody wearing purple and the flowers. I see you have some with you today, which is very cool. If you haven't been, it's a neat feeling to see everybody coming together to support. And would you all like to introduce yourselves into the microphone, and tell us who you are? And welcome all of you here tonight.
I'm Tom Mingalcer with Wayley's Pharmacy, I know Ron really well, also Jeff C. Host Lions Club, knowing you guys really well. So I'm here representing, in more than my other hats, the Alzheimer's Association. So I have a grandmother who died with the disease. It was very unfortunate to see the progression go from a loving grandmother to not knowing me and screaming at me and get away from me, kinda stuff. You know, and that's really heartbreaking when you go down those paths, so. And I know other people have experienced that as well. From the pharmacy side of it, I also know there is no treatment for it. You can only slow it down. And that's really depressing. So that's why we're here, is to try to help progress that along, so.
Good evening, thank you again. I'm Krista Rail. I'm actually the event chair. This will be my second year as the chair. I got involved because my mother had Alzheimer's. She passed away last November. I had an uncle who had vascular dementia, he passed away this April. And I also had a grandfather who died in the 80s from Alzheimer's. So I am an advocate for trying to find a cure. So thank you again.
My name?
My name is Sheila Spencer. I've had two grandpas that have died of Alzheimer's. I have an uncle that has Alzheimer's, and I had a mother that had Alzheimer's, but was so scared by it, she had to take care of her dad and took her own life because of it, because she knew that. But either way, she had Alzheimer's, she had the onset of it, so.
I'm Gloria Johnson, I'm with Central Trust Company, and I have trust customers that have dealt with Alzheimer's. And it's such a horrible disease. I've also had, my husband's family had some family members that also suffered for many years with that. So it's very important that we find a cure for this horrible disease.
Hello there, my name's Ashley Eddy. First of all, thank you so much for letting us be here and tell our stories. That's so important to our mission. I'm with KRCD-13, and I will be the emcee this year. I'm so excited to once again be able to share all of these amazing stories with our news organization, and be there that day, and I'm so excited. I hope you all will be there for our walk. It's gonna be great, and once again, thank you.
I'm Jennifer Rackers. I work at one of the long-term facilities here in Jefferson City. I have been in the nursing field for 20-plus years, and I have seen the effects of this disease every day for a long time, and I would just love to see an end to it. I see happiness in a lot of sad moments, not only with the residents that I take care of, but with the families. And it's affected us nurses as much as it does them. So an end would be such an awesome thing. So thank you so much for doing this.
I'm Chuck Rackers, I'm here with Jennifer.
I'm Emma Mae Schaefer. Been on the committees for a number of years. My mother died of Alzheimer's, my brother died of Alzheimer's. Our goal is, like everybody, to find a cure. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming and sharing those stories. I know that's very brave for you all to be able to come and speak about it, and it's important that we do all that we can. So thank you all for doing that. Well, we will see everyone at the Alzheimer's Walk, and remember to wear your purple on October 1st. And the Alzheimer's Walk is on Saturday, October 6th. I'm sorry, Sunday. That is a Sunday. Sunday, October 6th. Did I get that right? Okay. Correction there. So everybody wear your purple, and also, y'all are selling the purple necklaces. I know we have them at Kerry's Hallmark. Are they available anywhere else in town? At Wayley's?
Southwest.
Southwest, Wayley's Southwest. And I believe, are they $10? They're only $10. They're beautifully made little purple flowers. I would encourage everyone to pick one of those up too, to support. All right, well, we'd like to invite all of you up front, so we can get a picture and present the proclamation.
Go ahead.
Don't you go first.
You sure?
Yeah, we get their eyes.
Just keep going.
Okay, ready, one, two, three.
Thank you all very much, congratulations.
Why don't you say it to Krista?
Did we smile pretty?
All right, we have no public hearings tonight. We have Item 6, appointments by the mayor. We have a recommendation, Mrs., that's okay, we'll come back to that. But are there any questions on the slate that we have here for the commissions? Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 7, presentations from staff, consultants, and invited guests. We have with us Mr. Mike Cod, representing Phillips 66, to provide a project update. So we're looking forward to hearing about this tonight. We've seen it around town, so we're glad to have you here and tell us about it.
Well, thank you very much for the invitation. So as you all know, and I'm sure most of your constituents know, we've had an ongoing project since June. The East Side Project from the river to our terminal on Idlewood is approximately 50% complete. The West Side Project from Woods Crossing Road to our terminal on Idlewild is approximately 75% complete. They've run a little bit behind schedule on their, the boars we do, those long underground boars, just because no matter how often they were told that there's a lot of rock here, the contractors didn't seem to believe us, so it's taking them a little bit longer to do that. The proposed dates on the schedule right now for completion are the beginning of December. Excuse me, the beginning of December. And we continue to, you know, we have a website for people who have questions that wanna contact, that Arc Media manages for us, and we respond to inquiries. We really just mitigate anything that comes up from, you know, offline landowners, which including, you know, the traffic through town, any issues that have come up, we've mitigated. But most importantly, with the weather, the way it is, we'll be able to really jump on the rest of the project and finish up. They'll be taking off for the Thanksgiving holiday, that Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. But the rest of the year, you'll see them Monday through Saturday still, working 10-hour days. Does anybody have any questions?
Is there any questions? Okay, Mr. Cole?
From where does the pipeline originate?
This particular pipeline system originates in Borger, Texas. So right now, it runs from Borger, Texas to East St. Louis, Illinois. So it's approximately 706 miles. There's a couple of pipelines in the system now. This particular pipeline that we're replacing is being replaced because of its age, the integrity of the line. It's just better for us to replace this long section, and so that was the impetus for the project originally.
Good question. Any other questions or comments? Councilman Mahalovich?
Well, can you report the amount of investment you're making in this area?
Well, as far, I know that generally, we have around anywhere from 150 to 350 contractors or Phillips employees in town during the project. It ebbs and flows depending on what stage of the project we're in. Majority of them stay either in different trailer parks, where they'll bring a fifth wheel up, or in the different hotels in town. So with, I don't have a number as far as what we think we've, you know, these folks have spent, but over the course of, since June through the end of the year, it'll be a substantial sum at different establishments through the city. And then along with that, we've had a great opportunity to work with the community, especially after that horrendous tornado, to help donate some funds to the United Way. So we, I mean, of course, it's always great to be able to help, but that was just one bigger picture that we were able to really jump on and donate $50,000. But over the course of the last three or four years, since 2015, we're always donating for emergency, different emergency entities, you know, sometimes it's sirens and things of that nature for weather warnings and things like that.
I think that's worth recognizing, and you've listed those, some of those, maybe not all of them on that sheet. And especially wanted to thank you for your contribution to the East Side Business Association Patriotic Roundabouts. That was a great project for the East Side, and you stepped up to that.
Yeah, we've got a few of the folks that work out of our Jefferson City Terminal. One is still active in the Air Force, and one's retired from the Marines, so they were really excited about that as well. And I know Phillips 66 always looks to hire veterans, so they were pretty excited. We were all excited.
Good, well, thank you. And then also, our Jefferson City Police and Fire Services are part of your donations, so appreciate it.
Whenever we, and that's what's fantastic too, we're able to help, but then at the same time, whenever we have, I know I've attended a couple of drills that have been hosted at locations in Cole County and in Jefferson City, so it's a great partnership.
Well, we appreciate your dedication to our community, and it also says here that you use Missouri-based contractors and suppliers as much as possible, with more than 300 workers spending the nights in Jefferson City hotels and enjoying local food and services.
Right.
It's a boost to our economy too, while you're here.
It is. And one of the main contractor, or the main contractor for the East Project is out of Missouri. So most of the folks that work for that company, and a lot of the subs come from Missouri. So it's not only an impact for Jefferson City, but a lot of towns and folks across Missouri.
Well, that is great. So it looks like if they want more information, there's Phillips66JCMO.com.
Correct.
And if they wanna contact you, is it just best to reach out on this, there's an email,
Correct.
Okay. Well, I mean, typically, we don't do pictures if it's not like a proclamation, but would it be helpful? Do you want one posted? Do you share this?
Absolutely, I would love a picture.
Okay.
Without a doubt.
All right, we can make that happen for you and get this word out for you. Great.
I got you.
There we go.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thanks so much, thank you everyone.
Here to help, please, those now.
All right. Item 8, we have announcements by Mayor, Council, and staff. I'll start by saying, I'm not sure that we're gonna have the work session that's still tentative on Monday, September 30th, because I don't think we have quite enough people. So we're still, there's a few people we need to talk to on council and make sure. I think it may be, yeah, I think we may not really, we only have five. So if we're gonna do a work session, it'd probably be ideal if we had probably everybody in attendance. So probably don't need to hold that Monday, October, I'm sorry, September 30th. So we will look for another date, if that's okay with council. Okay. So our other committees though, if you would like to find them, on JeffersonCityMo.gov. For our complete meeting calendar, we have the four committees listed here. Are there any committee announcements tonight? Councilman Mahalovich?
Yes, we have a Finance Committee meeting at 7:30 this Thursday across the hall, and we'll be taking up the one item that was voted on during budget with regard to looking at the fund balance for, I guess we're using the word sinking fund. But that discussion, I'd encourage anybody that, you know, gets the packet to also read, there's a Gatsby booklet on fund balances, and how to gauge fund balances, and how you can restrict its use, how you can use those. And Margie, were those included in the packet, right? It's included in your packet as a PDF. Very short read, good read on best practices.
Great. All right, any other committee announcements? I'll give my announcements. I attended two groundbreaking ceremonies this week and last week. So Mid-America Bank broke ground at Stadium in Edgewood to build a new bank. And today, Missouri American Water broke ground for their new service station, service center, which is behind the fire station there, right off of kind of 179 and Main Street area. So excited to have two groundbreakings here in the capital city. I attended the first Lincoln University home game. They had a night game, and that was fun. I will announce also that I attended the Missouri, the MoDOT Blueprint Conference on Traffic Safety, and I was very proud that our own Sergeant Doug Rutiger gave a really great presentation on best practices, and along with some other departments from around the state. So it was a very proud moment to have him give his thoughts on public, or traffic safety. FID did a really good job. I also attended the Tunnel to Towers 5K to bring a welcome on Saturday. I know Chief Schofield, I might put you on the spot and give me a report, because I saw you there in full gear, along with some others, on Tunnel to Towers.
Well, we knew we had high expectations to bring the traveling trophy back to Jefferson City, so we had a four-person team, and I'm proud to report that we did retain that trophy. So I think that the event coordinator, Roxy Van Poel, will be coming to council in maybe a few weeks to make a presentation officially. We also had the fastest firefighter with Clint Kimker. So great turnout, and beautiful day. Really enjoyed the opportunity to run for a great cause, and one that returns a lot of needed funding to both veterans and first responders and their families.
Well, that was great, and congratulations. I think that deserves a round of applause for y'all bringing that traveling trophy. I knew you did it last year. I didn't know you could do it two years in a row. So we'll expect to have it back here in council chambers and celebrate that in the future, so, congrats. Another event that's upcoming is the Missouri State Fire Marshal's Memorial Stair Climb. That is Saturday, October 19th, at the Jefferson Building, where they have firefighters from around the state, or anyone can participate in this. And they retrace the steps up and down the Jefferson Building to equal what, the number of steps it would take to get to the top of the World Trade Center. And usually, the firefighters are there in their full gear, and they make the climb. I forget if you have to go up nine times to the top, or 10, I can't remember. But it's pretty impressive to watch, because as you go down the stairs and they're coming up in their full gear, you can imagine what it's like, and that's what they do every day. So that is coming up Saturday, October 19th. And also wanted to mention Oktoberfest. So that is next Saturday, September 28th. And I have been practicing the 10:00 AM keg tapping. So now that I've been in Minshburg, I know how they tap the keg, and I cannot wait to do that here in Jefferson City, because I saw the real deal over there. So I hope everybody comes out. There is stuff all day long. Usually, I'll see Councilman Mahalovich and Councilwoman Ward working at every Oktoberfest, and I usually see other council members there, so bring your family and friends. There's things going on there. The docks and races are a favorite, and I think it starts actually the Friday night before there's a dinner at the church, Central United Church of Christ. So anything to add on Oktoberfest? All right, so we'll see you all there. And I also noticed, we get the email commendations, and Chief Schrader sent one out about the 911 call center, and kind of a recognition for how many calls they received, I believe, in the hours following the tornado. And I don't think that's a number that we had really necessarily talked about, but it's pretty impressive when you think, just, you take a moment, think of the thousands of calls that came through that night, and we are thankful and impressed at the work that they do, and the recognition for those that were handling the calls that evening in such a volume. So that was very impressive, and if you would pass along our sincere thanks for what they did too. So, thank you, Chief. And another announcement, we have the Child Passenger Safety Week campaign. Some of you may have a flyer, and I think Chief Schofield can give us an update on that.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I would like to, and I'll have Captain Ryan Carender make his way to the podium. So as he's making his way up there, he's stepped up to be kind of our coordinator for this program. And it's an extensive training program to get our folks up to speed, and I believe 24 hours initially, and then a lot of ongoing training, and qualifications they've gotta go through to be certified to do this. And it's a safety program that we offer to the community. So I'll let him talk about the event.
Evening, everyone. As Chief Schofield said, I'm Ryan Carender, captain of the department. What we're doing is we're just having a car seat check event, to where we're partnering with MoDOT, Safe Kids of Columbia, and Missouri Coalition Railway Safety. From 10:00 AM to noon, families can come in, and those who are financially qualified for it, they can actually receive seats, or if they have a seat, they just want to make sure it's installed properly, we'll check those. We help them install them, make sure they're comfortable installing them, and make sure that the kids are safe. So that's kind of what the whole program is. This is just one car seat event. We're doing it for Child Passenger Safety Week. But all of our drivers and firefighters at the stations are all certified CPS or Child Passenger Safety Technicians. The public knows, a lot of people know about that, and they're free to come in during any time that, you know, a decent time during our day, but we're there 24 hours, so they can come in any time and have a seat looked at. Or again, if they qualify, we give out seats to the public as well, so. And I'll be happy to answer any questions anyone has.
Any questions from council? Well, that is a wonderful service that you offer, and we appreciate it. I know Councilman Hensley's gonna have to come over and get one checked here shortly, probably. Again, again.
We'd be happy to help you.
And so that event is Saturday, right, is that a Saturday, September 21st?
Yep, Saturday, September 21st, from 10 to noon.
10 to 12, at Fire Station 2 on 10 to 12 at Fire Station Two on McCarty.
Correct, the new fire station, so.
Oh, awesome. It's a good opportunity, yeah, to go, for people to go there and see the new fire station too.
Correct.
Kids would love that anyway.
Exactly.
All right. Well, we appreciate you doing that, and any other questions? All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item B, the Missouri 2021 Bicentennial Moment. I would encourage everyone to follow on Facebook, the Missouri Bicentennial Paint for a Cause. So, if you find the Paint for a Cause, you can take a triangle of a huge mural, and everybody can paint their own little triangle on this. It's going to be several, several feet long. So, find Missouri Bicentennial Paint for a Cause. I believe it was recently in Joplin. It travels around the state, so when it comes anywhere near mid-Missouri, you can have a chance to paint on that. Are there any other council announcements? Okay. Item nine, Lincoln University Student Representative Update, Carolyn Monjaro.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council as a whole. I would first of all like to thank you, Madam Mayor, for coming to our home game, our very first home game, which was on this past Thursday. We appreciate all the support and the help that you render to Lincoln University and the Blue Tiger Family. Also, just a quick reminder, Homecoming is three weeks away. I would like to invite all of you, on behalf of the Blue Tiger Family, to come out and join and enjoy the festivities of Homecoming alongside with alumni, students, faculty, and staff. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think you gave us that date. You said it's in three weeks. What was?
It's from October 14th.
The week of the 14th, okay.
Through the 18th.
Okay.
Yes.
And then the football game is the 19th. It looks like that Saturday. Is that, okay. Just want to make sure. And so, the parade is also the 19th? Is that right? Saturday, the 19th, Lincoln Parade. Okay. Well, we are looking forward to Homecoming. All right. Item 10, Presentations from the Gallery on Specific Bills or Resolutions. We have signed up Mr. Tom Winters to talk about 12B and 12C. Welcome, Mr. Winters.
I didn't know if this was the right time or place, but I saw on the news last night she was having some discussion about the airport terminal building and so forth. I worked at Jeff City Airport for 17 years, from 1990 to 2007, when I retired. Before that, I was airport manager and had a small airport south of Kansas City, so I do have some airport experience in my background. After the flood of 93 and 95, which I went through both of those, MoDOT had a plan in 93, I believe it was, to, that I thought was an awful good plan at the time, to make 54, when it got wiped out, they were going to make that the west levee, and wrap it around underneath the bridge and come east. It'd be south of the present levee, kind of build a new levee down through there, and raise it up a little bit, a couple of feet. And and I think that was a good idea, and maybe with the recent flooding, you might look and consider that as a, an alternative to patching what's there. I don't know. It would cost money, I'm sure. Back in the day, so to speak, there was estimates, I don't remember how many million, but it was several million dollars. I don't know if there's any FEMA money or MoDOT money or anything available for that, but I know some of us informally had talked to Tweigh House Excavating, and at that time, Dr. Wes Stricker, I don't know if he still does, owned the old quarry over north of 94, which is close there, where they could have got some fill and rock and so forth. And I think it would benefit the city in the long run to back the levee up a little bit. The opposition in the past, from what I remember, was that people on this side of the river thought it would increase the water level over here by raising the levee a little bit on that side of the river, which I, the studies from the Corps of Engineers didn't indicate that, but that was the feelings. Also, the terminal building, I understand you're probably going to demolish it. There was a, at the time, I called it Scott's Island, because there were seven acres where the old drive-in used to be, as some of you will remember. It's right there as you go to the airport on your, if you turn left and go around the loft equipment, or you turn right and go down the sand plant, well, right there on that corner. Bob Scott from Old Summit started putting fill in there when they built the new bridge. And in 93, that was the only thing above the flood level. And I suggested then that maybe the state look at going ahead and building that up and putting a hangar facility and so over there, but the powers that be didn't agree with me. And I think that might be something to look at if you are considering a new terminal. And the control tire, I don't know what your status on it is. Like I say, I live over California now, so I'm kind of out of the loop, but I know the control tire, it wouldn't be ideal place, but it could be built probably as a second story there on that corner and kind of have a, the ramp would have to be extended, and there is a little incline. I mean, there's quite a bit of engineering to be done, but it's just my thoughts and possibilities. So, if anybody got any questions otherwise.
Okay, any questions? Councilman Mahalovich?
I would encourage you to contact Dave Griffith, and if you give me your contact information, I'll get you in touch with him. He has been studying kind of recently the Weirs Creek and the L-142 plan that that the Corps had developed for North Jeff City. And it just, the price tag, and you you are correct, from what I've heard, is that this side of the river got weak knees over that plan, because they thought they would, might get flooded. The hydrologist said that that wasn't going to happen, but the price tag was about 25 million in the day, which meant they needed a non-federal sponsor for about 10 million. And no one took that, took up that challenge. So, the L-142 plan continues to be active. It could be re, if there was enough support, it could still be reactivated, and it's still approved plan. But Dave Griffith has has been studying that and Weirs Creek and some of the issues there. So, I would get your contact information to him.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Winters.
Yes, I'll put, I'll make a note about that, and I'll look up that 142 plan, and I'll write down my name and contact.
And also, if you get with our staff, Brett Smith specifically, with operations and city public works, they'd update you on our master plan.
Okay.
That has relocation of the of the of the control tower.
Okay.
And and some updating of the plans, but thank you for your interest.
All right. Yeah, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Winters, and we will be discussing that tonight as well, and you're welcome to share that information. Thank you. Item 11, Consent Agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Glad to see the DWI enforcement grant in there, too. That's great. Item 12, Bills Introduced, 201949.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri vacating and discontinuing all city-retained easements in the vacated right-of-way of the unnamed alley located between the 900 block of West Main Street and West High Street.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you, Mayor. As Clerk indicated, this is just vacate some of the utility easements that were retained on a previously vacated alley or right-of-way in this area. It's a request of Missouri American as it be part of their facility upgrades, and it would remove any remaining utilities prior to vacation.
Any questions? All right, thank you. 201950.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute Amendment Number One to a grant agreement between the City of Jefferson and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the purpose of conducting a master plan slash airport layout plan update for the Jefferson City Memorial Airport.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you. And this pertains to what the gentleman was talking about, but basically, this is the grant agreement to help pay for a study to look at potential new terminal building. Currently, the the current terminals happen to be demolished due to, due to its damage during this last flood. The grant agreement's for just over $45,000. As the federal share, it's a 90-10 grant, so the city would have to match that with approximately $5,000. That would come from the Hafcent CIP sales tax and for airport matching. And we have to answer any questions.
Councilman Mahalovich?
I'd like to suspend rules.
Okay, we have a request to suspend the rules, so seeing no objections, we will take up 201950.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute Amendment Number One to a grant agreement between the City of Jefferson and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the purpose of conducting a master plan airport layout plan update for the Jefferson City Memorial Airport.
Any further discussion or questions? Okay, seeing none, roll call, please.
Fitzwater.
He's talking.
Fitzwater.
He's talking.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Bill passes. 201951.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute Supplement Agreement Number One with JAviation Incorporated for services associated with the master plan project related to the feasibility of construction of a new airport terminal building.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you. And again, companion bill to the one prior, it also has a request, a checkmark to suspend the rules, just, and this is just to meet the timeliness of the grants that's required. Basically, a contract with JAviation, a local consultant here that's specialized in airport work. They were already predetermined as a airport planning consultant for Jefferson City, Jefferson City Memorial Airport. And so, basically, what the contract will do is add on this this terminal work to look at, you know, potential locations, size, flooding issues, cost estimates, include a public input process. And so, folks like the gentleman before can have input and and make sure we're all aware of various items from the past related to the terminal. So, we have to answer any questions.
Councilman Mahalovich?
I'd like to request to suspend rules on this.
All right. We have a request to suspend the rules, so seeing no objections. Councilman Graham.
Is that a question? What did you say the cost of this would be?
The total cost is right at $50,000, $5,000 of which comes from the airport matching out of the Hafcent sales tax. The other part's federal, $45,000.
Any further questions? So, we'll go ahead and take up 201951.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute Supplement Agreement Number One with JAviation Incorporated for services associated with the master plan project related to the feasibility of construction of a new airport terminal building.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Bill passes. 201952.
Amending the 2018, 2019, and 2019, 2020 budgets by retitleing one administrative technician position and one deputy court clerk position to two deputy court clerk, one and two positions within the law department.
Mr. Mullman?
Thank you. This bill would retitle two of our employees over at the municipal court. Currently, there is an admin tech at a salary level range 10. There's a deputy court clerk at range 12. This bill would change that to to retitle those positions and to not separate the job duties, but to instead create a career ladder where a person could get hired as a deputy court clerk, one, work for a number of years, gain experience and appropriate training, and then move into a range 10. So, instead of having two positions, which are hired separately, under separate job titles and separate pay ranges, we'd have a natural progression through the deputy court clerk position in the one and the two. This change would be anticipated to be either revenue neutral, or sorry, cost neutral or a potential cost savings. The city, in going through the interviewing process, could find someone that that they would want to hire, but hire at a, at a, a range 10 for the deputy court clerk one. And in that example, the city would then have two deputy court clerk ones at a, at a range 10. So, there's nothing to say that there always have to be a one and always have to be a two. You could have a situation where you have a one and a two, two ones, or even two twos, if you have, you know, two long-term employees that have met the requisite requirements.
All right, thank you. Any questions or discussion?
Quick question.
Councilman Graham?
So, you're saying two twos still would not have an impact on our budget?
So, two twos would have an impact, but the 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 chances of having two twos in the current budget is is nonexistent. So, any future budget impact would be based on having two employees that have the requisite training, experience, and an education. So, it would be, any future budget impact would be realized in future budget years. And and because it is a position where someone grows into those qualifications, grows into the promotion, I think that's something that can be planned for, for, you know, years in advance. So, not to say that it will never be a budget increase, the budget increase would be in the future and would be something that could be planned for, but and not immediate.
Any further questions or comments? Councilwoman Wiseman?
Thank you. With the position as it is now, if we don't reclassify it, there's, is there also a possibility that the salary could increase and and, I mean, what's the pay range that we're looking at, the current, at the current position versus the pay range that we're looking at at the new position?
The pay ranges are the same. So, so the deputy court clerk one would be at a range 10, which is the current range of the administrative technician. The deputy court clerk two would be at a 12, which is the current pay range of the current deputy court clerk.
So, is what you're saying that the pay range is going to be the same, we're just reclassifying what they're called?
That's, that's actually a big part of it, and and part of that is based on the municipal court administrator's input, that that she believes that instead of having a hierarchical approach to, you know, to to how she's supervising, it would be more helpful for court operations to have two deputy court clerks who aren't necessarily one and two, and have a, an internal ranking between the two.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. 201953.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri amending the definition of a motorized bicycle.
Mr. Mullman?
Thank you. This ordinance changes definitions in the city code to, well, currently, there is a definition that allows motorized bicycles, which essentially is a a motorized vehicle, but is 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 slow-moving. And then it has a particular criteria such that it must be straddled. And so, you have to ride it in a way that that you are straddling the the bicycle. There was a request from citizen, and really an inquiry from a citizen that asked, where in the city code does something like a a Segway, which is essentially a personal mobility device where you stand on a footboard and and drive it, you know, kind of standing up, but don't necessarily straddle it, and isn't necessarily a bicycle, that doesn't, didn't really clearly fall into anywhere within our city code. And so, this amendment anticipates taking the rules for a motorized bicycle and extending it to similar types of devices, whether that be a Segway, or whether that be a motorized scooter, or, you know, something like a motorized bicycle, or otherwise known as the e-bike, and really having one set of rules for these, for these devices that are really similar in in all ways, except for how they're ridden. So, essentially, this is the definition of a motorized bicycle, and this bill would cover any type of, any type of device where, you know, one person rides it, and it is a device of limited speed.
All right, any questions or comments? Okay, thank you. 201954.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing supplemental appropriation to the Jefferson City Police Department amending the 2018, 2019 annual budget and authorizing the expenditure of such funds.
Chief Schrader?
Thank you. This bill, in effect, authorizes the replacement of K-9 Buzz. As of even six weeks ago, we thought that Buzz's functionality would remain for another six to 12 months, but he's really digressing pretty quickly, and the professional advice we're receiving is that he must be replaced. He simply can't function as he has in the past, and this would allow us to expend $8,000 of drug forfeiture money for that purpose. Of course, we already have the RUN, the He simply can't function as he has in the past, and this would allow us to expend eight thousand dollars of drug forfeiture money for that purpose. Of course, we already have the run, the equipment, things of that nature. We have a line item that would allow us to expend money for the necessary training. The eight thousand dollars is strictly for the purchase of another K-9. Be happy to answer questions.
Councilman Graham?
Oh, yes. So Chief, not to get into the details, but is this something that you think we should suspend the rules tonight on to move this forward since we're at this point, or are you fine with, with where we at?
Well, I think it would be helpful, yes. I mean, we, Buzz can't, can't work for us anymore, and so we, we would like to purchase and commence training as soon as possible.
Let me, I'd like to suspend the rules on this tonight.
Okay, thank you. We've had a request to suspend the rules. Are there any objections? Seeing none, we'll take up twenty nineteen fifty-four.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the supplemental appropriation to the Jefferson City Police Department amending the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen annual budget and authorizing the expenditure of such funds.
Any further discussion or questions? Roll call, please. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Mahalovich.
So the eight thousand dollars, that's, that, that has a specialized, highly specialized vehicle that goes with that. Is it, is that vehicle still within good mileage range and functioning well? Because I know it has, it'll turn on automatically, it will roll down windows, it will do a lot of things.
To my knowledge, that's not necessary. That remains functional for the new K-9. It's not been brought to my attention that we would require the replacement of that vehicle.
The second question of that is, did you say that the eight thousand's for the purchase of the, of the K-9 only?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so would you, it seems like you sent it, sent the animals down to Cape Girardeau area for training. Will that be another request?
Well, they, it's, there's ongoing training. We've, to reduce the expense, we now currently, the majority of the time, go to Boone County and utilize a trainer there, so that's, that's really reduced the amount of expense we have in training that's, but with the K-9, there's ongoing training expenses. That's kind of part of the deal. I'm not sure what your question is.
Well, I'm just saying, it seems like that's, that's a fairly low number for replacement of a K-9. Seems like I was expecting twenty thousand even after training and, and all the, all the stuff that, that we did in the past, I thought.
I think that it would've been closer to accurate if we were starting from scratch, and we didn't have the equipment, we didn't have the run, we didn't already have a line item for the training, those types of things, so that's why we can just, we're strictly asking for authorization to expend the drug forfeiture money just to purchase the animal because everything else is in place.
Thank you.
All right, any further deliberation? All right, roll call, please.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey. Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
All right, bill passes. Item thirteen, Bills Pending, twenty nineteen forty-seven.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Horner and Schifrin Incorporated in the amount of two-hundred forty-six thousand, three-hundred forty dollars for the binder and Indian Hills Pump Station Upgrade Project.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you. Design contract, as Clerk indicated, with Horner and Schifrin replaces two pump stations, one's about forty years old, the other's thirty-six. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, deliberation? Roll call, please.
Hussey. Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Bill passes. Item thirteen, Bills Pending, twenty nineteen forty. And we know that Councilman Hussey had requested, since he wouldn't be here as the bill sponsor, that it would go on the, or remain on the informal. So is there any, anything different from council, or just keep that on the informal? And without the bill sponsor here, Councilor Mollman, we just leave it on the informal? We don't need anyone to request it stay?
Nope.
Okay. And twenty nineteen forty-six, Councilwoman Wiseman?
I'd like that to remain on the informal.
Okay, thank you. And item fifteen, Resolutions, twenty nineteen ten.
A resolution authorizing Sun Life Financial for group dental, vision, basic, supplemental, independent life, AD&amp;D, long-term disability, accident, and critical illness insurances.
Mrs. Strope?
Thank you. This resolution authorizes city staff to work with Sun Life Financial to provide dental, vision, accident, life insurance, long-term disability, and critical illness insurance coverages for our city employees and their family members for calendar years two thousand twenty and twenty-one. Sun Life Financial is offering a two-year agreement on the rates, and the cost for them, the dental insurance will actually go down a little bit compared to this year. The accident insurance will also go down slightly, and the critical illness insurance will go up a little bit. The rest of the rates will remain the same.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve Resolution twenty nineteen ten? So moved. Any further discussion? Councilman Mahalovich?
Does it have any impact on our budget that we approved?
No, it really doesn't. The amounts were in the budget because most of the rates are the same, or the amounts are so close that it really doesn't have an impact. The dental insurance, the cost to the city, the savings is five thousand, seven hundred dollars across the year, so.
Okay. So no, no budget amendment is, is necessary to?
Correct.
Okay.
Any further questions?
There might be a savings overall.
Great.
I, I heard that. I heard that.
Any further questions? Roll call, please.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey. Kimna.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Item sixteen, we have no presentations from the gallery on other topics. Item seventeen, is there any council and staff discussion of presentation topics? Item eighteen, any new business? Nineteen, any unfinished business? And twenty, a motion to adjourn. All right, that's, I think was second. Okay. All in favor, say aye. All right, have a great evening.